All right. Any other members? Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mr. President. Out of an abundance of caution, I'm accusing myself from item one because my wife's employer has worked on the project in the past.
All right.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lee, welcome back.
Thank you, Council President. Out of an abundance of caution, I'd like to recuse myself from item number one because I'm dealing with this law firm on a personal matter.
Okay, item one.
Good morning. My name's Adam from the L.A. Community Action Network to speak on item 22, 32, and general public comment.
You'll have two minutes for the items and one minute for general public.
Thank you.
Comment, please start with the items.
Start with item 22. This item is for $10,000 more to LAPD for, quote, "additional police services in CD-5." I don't need to remind this body about how last year you gave an additional billion dollars to the LAPD over the next four years while we were facing what apparently will amount to a billion-dollar deficit in the next fiscal year. Councilmember Jaroslawski, who is also the chair of the Budget and Finance Committee and who will be leading discussions about next year's budget, is requesting this additional money for LAPD. Do they not have enough? What is this money for? Will you all vote on this without any details about what is it actually going towards? I heard Councilmember Rodriguez talk about there's no scope, there's no contract for a lot of the loss of funding. Same goes for how the city pours money into the LAPD. What does additional police services mean? Does the public have the right to know what its elected officials are voting on, particularly with regard to more money for the already financially bloated LAPD? Number 32. This item is about adding an enforcement zone in CD-6 using L.A. Municipal Code 4118. The city's own limited data shows that the 4118 does not help anything. In fact, we know that criminalizing poor people is incredibly violent and counterproductive. Forcing houseless people to move disconnects them from what services they might be currently receiving, or at least signed up to theoretically receive. Shuffling people around leads them to getting pushed into different council districts. Targeting people for criminalization in sweeps causes people to lose contact with their communities and support systems, lose vital documents required for services. Why does the city council continue to lean on criminalizing poverty rather than addressing it with real solutions? We need house keys, not handcuffs. Now I'll go to general public comment. Raise your hand if you're listening during public comment. Raise your hand if you're listening to voters here today. Working people taking precious time out of their day. So raise your hand if you're listening to what we say. Do you care what constituents come in here to do? Do you care when you're voting to pass these motions through? 218,000 each is what we pay to you. So can you pretend to listen? It's the least that you can do. So raise your hand if you're listening during public comment. Raise your hand if you're listening to the voters here today. Working people taking precious time.
Speaker, your time is up. Speaker, your time is up. Speaker, which items would you like to speak to? Mr. Herman, we can start the call now.
Yes, sir. Madam. Sir. Regarding the police service for Yaroski, KKK Yaroski, and Timmy McCockucker, sir. We're finding out they want additional police officers to protect the West Side, White Side people because of the continuous march and protest between one group and another group, which I will not say the N or the C word about. However, these issues in the neighborhood for enhancements are not so true because police officers, from what I heard on the news, in a story in a movie called Niggers with Attitude, say fuck the police. And that is what I believe. Look at item 23 again. KKK KKK Kirovsky, KKK KKK Kirovsky. We're having a Jewish-American month. In a moment of silence, please. We shall recognize the necessary proofs that the Holocaust did not exist. The Joker cost was not real because if it were real today, you same people, yes, sir, would say to me that I am using communist words, yes, sir. But the fact of the matter is I'm here to protect the corrections and clarifications and revisions about the Joker cost in celebrating its purpose of heritage. God bless Donald Trump. Now, my final comment on the last item within last minute is number 32. 32, Padilla, and the enforcement against sleeping in line in a motherfucking street when you're homeless? I've been in outrage about this. That's the reason why I've used intensifiers. I use signs, I use my art to identify the slums of L.A. in your rights to a life. But no, they're saying get your storage, get your sleeping off the fucking streets. Borden, Baus, Circumanto, Borden, Sacramento, what do they got? We got sidewalking streets, and I will improve them soon. Now into my general public comment. Now, I, a disabled person, is having my rights of free speech censored or shut off and finding out that this motion declared by Monkey Dawson up there, who finds it offensive of these episodes, but again, ladies and gentlemen, I read into the record my view about Los Angeles as being dirty. I talked about Los Angeles being dirty. I said it throughout my life, HHH, bitch, bitch, bitch. But 45 of you don't understand that. I got your attention now. I'm in the news, and I haven't used the N-word or the C-word. So Brandenburg versus Ohio, USG 95 over 4, 1969? A dirty nigger, L.A.
Speaker, which items would you like to speak to? You'll have three minutes for the items.
Good morning, niggers and cunts. Here we are again. Number 18 is the first nigger item. Continued consideration.
Number 18 has been continued, so you can speak to items 19 through 32.
It's a nigger item, is it not? So how about 19? Can I speak on that? D E I. Of course. So KKK Katie Jaroslawski, the worst thing to happen to the Hebrew people since the opening of Auschwitz, is now trying to do streetlight repairs? What a fucking joke that cunt is. Can you believe, Marquez, that after all these years, this bitch came up with $100,000 fucking dollars? Now, what happened? The ghetto don't get that, but she gets it for the Hebrew demons. And then number 20, that's a cunt item. The program celebrate the 43rd Annual Cuntous Festival at Cunt Echo Park. We vote no on that shit. Item 21, niggas trimming trees in CD-4 for Nithia Ramen Noodle, a known certified cunt. It's right. $75,000 that bitch finally found under the mattress. Mattresses the City Hall offices. That's where you've been bending over all those campaign donors, right? And then KKK Katie again finding $10,000 while you dirty little cunt you. Look at how you can find that money. Ringy ding ding, ringy ling ling. And then we have 23, the fake Holocaust motion by KKK Katie Jaroslawski. There wasn't no goddamn Holocaust. You out of your fucking mind? Every German would have been arrested, tried and executed. You don't have no goddamn Holocaust. That bullshit's ridiculous. They were work camps, fool, like I'm working here, fool. Doing the round, nigger in the round, going the round, bitch in the round, going the round.
Speaker, you need to get up on topic.
Going around. Well, I'm just rapping, I'm sorry. It's my Tourette's syndrome, my disability, I apologize. Number 24, why we got Monique Calcut Regus? The biggest fattest piece of shit on the council. She wants to do housing bonds. Ain't no goddamn housing bonds. Fuck that. And let's be clear, on Friday, our city attorney taught me how to spell two words. I wasn't sure, Bob. Nigger is spelled N-I-G-G-E-R. And cunt, I didn't know this, Bob, is spelled C-U-N-T. Now, how come Heather Hutt didn't sign the motion? She's been called both nigger and cunt, and she didn't sign the motion? How come only seven of you motherfucking gang members signed the motion to ban these words? They're laughing at you, all over, they're laughing. But why am I dressed as Santa Claus, nigger? Why? Because my First Amendment attorney already started racking up his $844 an hour fees. We're getting ready for the lawsuit. I want my motion today, wave it out of committee so we could all start getting paid for being niggers. I want to be paid as a nigger.
I'm Minister Ms. Kelly Cliff, and I'm the lady that was raped and asleep by Los Angeles Police Department, found out that I was a virgin. And you've got to pay attention, there's too much talking going on. They have new council persons, and there's too much talking. Kelly A. Cliff versus Los Angeles District Attorney's Office, et cetera, all Third Amendment. There's too much talking. And not only that, it seems like five or seven years before some type of payment. I've been experiencing what I've experienced for, it'll be 30 years in October 2025, for the new council persons that are not aware. Now, number two, role models. Karen Bass needs to be replaced. Karen Bass is a wrong role model. She needs to be recalled, and may a Christian billionaire write the check of $25 to $30 million to recall Karen Bass. Number three, a little short Spanish police officer came into my apartment and committed sexual acts against me. This is why we have the problems that we have. You've got to pay attention.
Speaker, your time is up. Speaker, your time is up. Speaker, which items would you like to speak to?
Ms. City Attorney, if you allow me, I would like to speak on 19, 20, and 21, and then general, if you allow me.
You'll have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
Start with item 19, if you allow me. Item number 20. Now, let's move on to item number 21. General, I am here to continue to support my position to Councilmember Spindler. So I attended the first CD Council District One election campaign event one week ago, and then, interestingly, that somebody took my voice away. But I want to inform everybody, especially in Council District One, that I will not be disencouraged, even though I no longer have my voice, even though they are coming after my voice, even though they are coming after my safety, but I will continue to support our Councilmember Spindler. There's a huge attack on the First Amendment rights in Council District One. There's a first, there are so many attacks on the Second Amendment on the Council District One. Councilmember Hernandez will take your First Amendment, Second Amendment away. Who will going to protect your rights? Only Councilmember Spindler. Vote Spindler, Council District One.
Speaker, your time is up.
Item 22 is from Ms. Jaroslawski for $10,000 in extra police services. Now, this is real smart. These retarded incompetent clowns voted the LAPD $1 billion increase last year. The city is in a $1 billion budget deficit emergency, also known broke. And these incompetent corrupt clowns are voting to give LAPD an additional $10,000 for so-called additional police services. Stupid, stupid, stupid. In my opinion, this $10,000 should be diverted to the $275 billion emergency, the homeless emergency, and the $1 billion budget emergencies caused by this corrupt incompetent sleazy council. Items 27 and 28 are by 10-count embezzlement indicted criminal current price for over $2 million engineering fund dollars, beautification, and, in my opinion, for embezzling into him and his family's personal business accounts. In my opinion, these two items should receive a no vote unless they contain special audit wording that would prevent indicted and currently on trial criminal current price from embezzling the $2 million. Item 32 by Padilla and Ethics Commission indicted racist Asian John Lee is for 4118 motion to further abuse some of the tens of thousands of homeless individuals that are criminal enterprise L.A. city government created and does not know how to decrease. This motion, of course, does not offer any solution, but only moves people around to another location. Stupid, stupid, stupid. This item should receive a no vote unless it provides a real solution that would serve the individuals that this abusive motion affects. But these incompetent clowns have no solution. Do you, Padilla? Do you, corrupt Dawson? General public comment. The L.A. council is the most incompetent corrupt local government U.S. history a criminal enterprise within just the last couple of years. Urani Martinez, Gil Cedillo, Kevin Louis Vuitton Leon, all ousted for insane racism and corruption. Eric Garcetti, deputy mayor, 12-year prison sentence. Karen Bass, deputy mayor for public safety, currently investigative for bomb threats. Current price, 10-count embezzlement indicted and currently on trial. Mark the 30-year Ridley Uncle Tom, U.S. indicted and convicted. Racist Asian John Lee indicted by Ethics Commission. Jose Huizar indicted and convicted with 13 years. Marquise Dawson is next. Is there any wonder why L.A. has a $1 billion emergency, homeless epidemic emergency? $275 billion fire damage emergency? Sleazy Marquise Dawson? CD-8 is a food desert. The city's highest incarceration rate, homeless rate, the highest unemployment rate in the United States, and a little man has procured over $10 million in luxury offices for himself. I'm going to do 18 if I can, because I couldn't do it. 18 is regarding amending land use proposal of October 2024. In my opinion, this item should receive a no vote unless wording is added to this item that adds for full funding and an investigation as to why our incompetent government allowed over 6,000 homes to burn and $275 billion in damage while acting mayor incompetent corrupt Marquise Dawson and party hearty incompetent Karen Bass did nothing. Now, that would be a correct motion. 18. All right, got it.
When it comes to the 41.18 thing, I think you guys can probably take really good lessons from Scientology on how to do that because this past week we saw a veteran who was, you know, because the Scientology, they passed out, they're like, welcome everyone, we're giving away free food, and he had lost everything. I don't know if he was robbed or what it was, but he came there asking for help, asking for food and clothing. He's a veteran, okay? And they, like, shut the door in his face. They would not help him or, you know, and I saw my own eye, too, a woman just, a house woman just sitting down for a minute on the street to, like, catch her breath or cool off, and they came storming with their bikes, running, you know, to hurry up and get her out of there. Like, how dare a human being sit down, you know, on the street if they're tired? I also know somebody who came to me personally saying that they sat down, they went to their food program and coming out before going home, sat on one of the benches on the sidewalk and were kicked out. So you might want to go talk to Scientology to see.
Speaker, you should move on to your next item.
Okay. The next item is I see a lot of money on all the different items being spent, and a lot of it, I think, is kind of worthless, especially since we're in a billion-dollar budget. I feel you guys are not really getting it, that you need to close the wallet. I think Smoke and Scan will agree with me on this.
Okay, Speaker, you need to speak to specific agenda item right now.
All the ones with, all the ones, stop interrupting me, anything that has money going out, I'm talking on all of them. Okay? I'm allowed to do that, is my right. I know you guys are, you know, going after.
If you want to give a general public comment, we can move you to general public comment.
No, I do not want to give a general public comment. I'm talking about all the ones.
Okay, then you need to speak to an item.
The one where public works, where money's going out. Okay? I think you guys are spending too much money. We want our wallet closed. Now, I see one where you're asking for money back, that's good. You know, like, you can find, I'm not talking about finding the people, that's what you want. You want to get all the money from us, and we don't want you to get it from us. But all your business dealings where people, you know, break their contracts and you just excuse it.
Speaker, which item are you speaking to?
The one on public works, where they're getting all this money, and then the other one where money is coming back. Okay? Those. We want our wallet closed. We want you guys to understand the budget. Okay? Now, how about Granada Hills? Things like the Granada Hills one. I'm all for celebrating neighborhoods, but you know what? I don't want the city having to pay for it. That should come out of, like, you have, you know, bids or whatever, you know, they can pay for it privately, they can pay for it. I don't want the city paying for things that, you know, when we're so broke, and then, like, you're asking for a lot more money for cops. I mean, cops get the biggest budget of all, they get over half the budget. Why aren't you asking for money for the fire department?
You have one minute for general public comment.
Okay, I was hoping, no offense to you, Madam City Attorney, I was hoping Mr. Grote was here because he owes me an apology. And I hope, you know, and so can you please pass that in? I will be happy to tell him the next time I see him because he, like you, always interrupting and interrupting me, you know, but I was in the right, I was on topic, and he apologized for that, but still threw me off base. And that's what, and I wish, and you too, Madam City Attorney, I think Smoke and Scan would agree with this as well. We'd rather you do the job of policing those people who are not listening. Which, how many of these people up there are even listening? And I'm disappointed with Ms. Padilla because she's one of my favorites, and she's not paying attention. Ms. Geraldo's knew she's not paying attention. See, they don't even blink. The president, wave hi if you even hear me, sir, please. Nope, see, he doesn't hear me. Mr. Price, Mr. Hugo, wave to me if you hear me. Nope, see, they're not listening. Okay? So why don't you call them out on it instead of calling?
Speaker, your time is up.
I'll begin with item 22. We are transferring $10,000 in the CD-5 portion of the Neighborhood Service Enhancement line item to give overtime to police. So everyone who lives in the city knows that we are lacking in services, we're lacking in street services and sanitation services. Lights go out, they're out forever. Trash builds up, it's there forever. You would think that that $10,000 would be better served in CD-5 to actually provide the services under Neighborhood Service Enhancement, but it's going to the police despite the fact that the police are our biggest budget line item already. Just their, their operating budget is huge. We gave them a billion-dollar increase last year, funny enough, that's about the amount of the deficit we're looking at. But Katie thinks it's appropriate to take away funding for services which are lacking and give more to police. Make that make sense. Item 23, speaking of funding, was amended from $15,000 to $25,000 for Jewish-American Heritage Month. Now, I, I think that Judaism is a beautiful religion. Many friends and loved ones of mine are Jewish, and I, I think that celebrating Jewish-Americans is worthy. I just wonder if while we're staring down the barrel of a deficit, if $25,000 makes sense for that. I was looking at council files for other Heritage Month recognition, and a lot of them are a mere $438 to light up City Hall. Like Muslim Heritage Month, for example, did not get 25K. Native American Heritage Month, just $438 to light up City Hall. Now, on the other side of that, Asian Pacific American Heritage Month in 2023 got $50,000. So it seems like there's really no parity as far as what we're spending, but I think that we need to cut back on these extras, on the fun stuff, on throwing parties while we're looking at a deficit and be serious about our budget. Item 26 is regarding holding a Friday meeting, March 28, at Van Nuys City Hall. This is great for me because I live in the valley, but it makes it less accessible for many L.A. residents, and it's not a substitute for what you should be doing anyway, which you have the capacity to do, which is have remote telephone public comment option. Councilmember Rahman's representative tried to give me that as a consolation when I asked her about phone-in comments. She says we're holding one meeting a month on Van Nuys, and that's fine for the items on that meeting, but that's really not a substitute for the better accessibility of being able to call in would be. And 32 is a 4118 expansion, and we better see a no vote from Nithia Rahman on this. She has recently voted yes on a 4118 motion, but then her rep said that was a mistake, that she had left the meeting but was marked as yes. So I hope that doesn't happen again today. They said, now watch what you say, your speech has to be valuable if it's political and certain words are criminal. If I call you a name and you find it unacceptable, not respectable, would you consider me ejectable? Marquise said that language would get you hurt if said outside chambers. Is he threatening to throw hands? But they don't pay attention anyway. Is it different if I say, there I'll see you next Tuesdays? Is it different if I say, they're all see you next Tuesdays? Don't forget to follow @RequestToSpeak on YouTube. Shout out Smoke and Scan, and the Sherman Oaks Neighborhood Council is hosting a Government Affairs Committee meeting this evening on Zoom. We'll be discussing LSA and communications from CD four. I would love to see you all there.
I'm here for public comment.
You'll have one minute.
Good morning. I'm Daphne Bradford, and I came before you today with a message to Councilmembers Heather Hutt and Karen Price, Council President Marquise Harris-Dawson. This is the last week of my ninety-nine-year-old grandmother's exhibit, Space Shuttle Ethel, The NASA Life of Ethel Lee at the Columbia Memorial Space Center in Downey, California. The exhibit has been up since Black History Month. My grandmother was born before Dr. Martin Luther King began working for NASA at Rockwell International four months after federal government opened NASA, and she played a pivotal role in putting the first man on the moon. It is a shame that not one of you have supported the three generations of the historical space, science, technology, engineering, and arts and math legacy that our family has established. Council President Harris-Dawson, you can change this. Who do I contact in your office? Thank you.
Actually, I'm gonna do public comment.
Okay, you'll have one minute.
Uh, poco a poco me di cuenta de que alguien está engañando a alguien. No puede ser, la mujer desaparecida. Miraculosamente.
Uh, un segundo, señora. Slowly and slowly, I am unable to.
Yes.
The interpreter does not understand the rest of what was said.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead.
Adelante, señora, puede seguir?
La mujer desaparecida miraculosamente existe en cuadras del linaje ancestral. Faith Windsor, todo vive, sigue en ancestry.com.
The woman miraculously, uh, has disappeared, and I cannot, uh, find her. Uh, the interpreter is unable to understand the rest of what was commented.
Okay, that's fine. Uh, this in English, I'll go back to English. Uh, online resources for finding people, Julie, down on fourth floor, uh, down lower level, she'll help you. I told her everything about Faith Windsor's house. She said the mailbox is there, uh, the mailbox is still there. It's this, it's decrepit, but it's still there. Uh, Faith Windsor was there. Yeah. But they have her as live. So I hope you, uh, go and make that walk, it's a five-mile walk, uh, below, uh, Ventura Boulevard, it's, uh, millionaire homes, and see what looks like an intended forest.
Speaker, which items would you like to speak to?
I'd like to speak to nineteen, twenty-two, in public comment.
You'll have two minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
All right, so we're here talking about street lighting services increases. This is after last year, you guys, to give that LAPD one-hundred-and-twenty-six-million-dollar increase decreased funding in street lighting by five-point-three million dollars. Somehow, that was a priority. Now, I was just over at the LAPD Commission, they said that crime is down. Crime is down month over month, year over year, year over year, every year since COVID. But yet you increased the funding and cut street lighting. Street lighting, which, you know, I gotta, gotta tell you something, you go to South Central, go ride down the streets at night, go down any major street. Go down Western, go down Normandy, go down Hoover, you know what you're gonna see? Dark streets. And we have dark streets, what's that gonna breed? It's gonna breed crime. So you have dark streets breeding crime, you say, you know what? We gotta fix this, we need more police funding. So you end up in that death spiral because you refuse to fully fund services. Now, I see in CD five, you guys want to increase police funding again. Again, like I just said, you increased police funding by a hundred-and-twenty-six-million dollars last year while you cut the fire department by eighteen, and cut street services by twenty-two, and cut sanitation by twenty, and then you're gonna ask for additional funding for policing outside of what they already have, outside of the fact that they've already overspent by a hundred and something million, outside of the fact that their liabilities are pushing between one hundred and two hundred million, as Hugo over there, who did vote for the police budget two years ago. These are your priorities. As far as public comment, I gotta tell you guys, you guys really fucked up the budget. We are one billion dollars in the hole. It's because of you, it is not outside forces that cause these problems. You guys did it. Kenneth Mejio warned every single one of you, every step of the way, and you disregarded him. You said, the mayor said that it was theatrical exaggerations, his projections, and he was dead on. So shame on all of you who sat there and voted for these bullshit budgets. Three of you get a pass. Eunice's, Nithia, and that piece of crap Hugo, you get a pass. The rest of you voted for that shit. And now we are in crisis. Eighteen months ago, we had record general fund reserves. Now we are in fiscal emergency, eighteen months later. Great job, all of you. You guys have run this city into the fucking ground.
All right, that concludes public comment.